And we're live. I'd like to call to order, good morning and welcome to the July 22 Committee of the Hole Meeting, which I now will call to order. Item B in this agenda is under declarations of interest. For item L3 on the agenda, I advise that I'm declaring a pecuniary interest as I have had at real estate dealings with a company associated with Land Services Group. Are there any declarations of interest from members of council? Seeing none, I will move to item C. I will now share our land acknowledgement statement. The Town of East Gullimberry recognizes and acknowledges the lands were originally used and occupied by the first peoples of the Williams Treaty First Nation and other indigenous peoples. And on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipewas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Gullimberry's closest First Nation community and recognize the unique relationship the Chipewas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental steward of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. Do members of council have any community announcements to share? I'm not seeing any at this time, however, if it should appear when we're partway through, let me know. Just give me a sign and we can go back to it if need be. We have one deputation on the agenda today. Before we begin, I will quickly go over a few reminders for today's deputation. Deputants are asked to come to the lectern, speak clearly into the microphone, and please introduce yourself and advise if you are here on your own or representing someone else. You will have five minutes to speak, not including any questions from council. I will provide a quick timing reminder as you approach the five-minute mark, so please ensure your comments stay focused on the topic you outlined in your deputation request form. We ask that everyone to maintain respect and decorum. Disruptive or inappropriate behavior will be addressed, and if needed, I may issue a warning or ask someone to leave. We are at item one, and that is G. Lee making a deputation to committee regarding a request for servicing allocation for 1513 Mount Albert Road, Sharon. Good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council. My name is Gooon Lee. I run Papa D's Pizza and Barbecue with my parents, and we've been living and working at 1513 Mount Albert Road in Sharon for the past eighteen years. When we first started our business, Sharon was still a rural village. At the time, it was common to operate without proper sewage infrastructure, and we accepted the inconvenience and recurring cost of having wastewater manually removed. Despite the challenges, we worked hard and kept our small business going. Now, the area around us has transformed into a modern, rich, dense town. Taxes have increased significantly, and the community has grown repeatedly. But despite all the development, our wastewater situation remains exactly the same, and we are still using an outdated holding tank system and have received none of this infrastructure benefits that now surrounds us. Our tank needs to be emptied every two months, which is very expensive. To delay servicing, we go to great lengths to reduce our water use, even showering at the gym. This kind of living has just become stressful, inconvenient, and simply unsustainable, both for our business and our home. We are constantly worried about even basic water use, like cooking or washing. The town sewer line now runs directly beside our building. We are asking for sewage location and permission to connect to it. We recently met with town staff, and were told that the estimated cost to connect would be around $250,000. Part of the cost, we were told, is due to the original line being paid for by a developer, and we would have to help cover that cost. But for a small family business like ours, that amount is simply unaffordable. We haven't raised this issue before, but the responses have been discouraging. That's why I'm here today, asking for your help. We are not asking for special treatment, just a fair opportunity to connect to the system that already exists. We believe that access to a basic infrastructure like sewage should be a fundamental part of any modern community. We respectfully ask the council to grant us the sewage location and consider ways to make the connection process more affordable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I'm not seeing any at this time. Could I have a mover? Be it resolved that the deputation made by G. Lee regarding a request for servicing allocation for 1513 Mount Albert Road in Sharon be received? Counselor Crone, thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. Yes, we're just going to vote. Go ahead. Good question.
Just a question on the motion. I recognize that, you know, we have to treat every property equally and that we do have this process in place for, you know, obviously, the allocation, it would be one or two units, and I think that's something that's achievable. The challenge is the connection costs. And so, in addition to this motion, I think it might be appropriate for us to ask staff if there is a way for us to get creative. I know in the past, when we've had small businesses come to us, we've been able to find a way to make it workable, or at least try and give some other options other than a simply a one-time cash payment, which obviously would be a serious challenge from a cash flow perspective for this small business. So, I know we've all enjoyed Papa D's Pizza, so I would hate for the current market conditions to impact their ability to continue operations. So, I'd just like to ask staff to see if there's a way that they can get creative. I know we've worked with other businesses in the past. So, I'd like to add to that motion, if I may, whoever. I didn't see who made it.
Happy to be able to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the request from Counsel Roy DiClemente? I'm not seeing any questions at this time. We have a mover and a seconder. I don't need a seconder, thank you. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. We are on to, thank you. Yes, you can leave and have a day today. We are on item F, presentations, with M. Gassan making a presentation to committee regarding the Sharon inline storage solution. And they are joining virtually.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and members of council.
Good morning.
Yeah, apologies for not being there in person. I usually do these presentations in person, but unfortunately, it did not work out this time, but I look forward to seeing everybody in person, hopefully at the golf tournament in September, if not sooner. As you know, my name is Mustafa Gassan. I'm from Delta Urban. I'm the group manager for the Sharon West Landowners Group. Thank you for inviting me to speak today to provide an update on the status of the inline storage project. I'll keep my presentation brief, but I am excited to share that we received conditional approval from the region on July 17, so last week. So, that's a major milestone that we have been pursuing over the past couple of years, and the nature of the conditions are very minor, and we are in agreement with them. So, at this juncture, we are actively working and quickly getting the consulting team to finalize all the contracts and requirements to formally retain the contractor, with the aim to get everything sorted out within the next week or two, and hopefully have them mobilize and commence construction. If not by end of the month, it will be in early August. And the target for completing the project is now end of October. So, we're aspiring to meet those milestones. And then, based on that progress, I'm hoping that the landowners will continue their engagement with staff to finalize any application process or requirements towards building the full community. And as you know, that will all be market-driven, but we are investing $8 million into this main insurance solution, so there is eagerness to go out there, build the community, and if the market is there, we'll hope to get it done and satisfy council and the community's wishes for it to be finally complete. That's my update, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions of the presenter. Counselor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you to Mr. Gassan. The letter that I received a copy of from February earlier this year noted that permits to build houses could be pulled six months before completion. So, do you anticipate that your clients will be coming to the town to request building permits? Because if, once your contract is awarded, it sounds like you can actually start building some of these homes.
Yeah, I believe that opportunity is available to them. I'm not very close to the status of all the documentation and approvals for the owners, but if they do have that ability, and if there is a market where they're able to sell homes, then I suspect that some will be in a position to pull permits over the next couple of months. I am meeting, this really came in last week, and I'm hoping to meet with the owners this week, and we'll provide confirmation as to how soon we can start building houses. But as I said earlier, we are putting $8 million into this project. It is not D.C. recoverable, so there is eagerness to recoup some of the cost back. So, if the opportunity is there, I'm sure the owners will capitalize it.
Thank you. I know that from a community perspective, it would be lovely to see some of these homes finished. There are properties that were built in 2017 that are looking out over works yards and construction material and cannot build their back fence because they're still waiting for their neighbors to have their homes built. So, if I may just gently request, once the contract has been awarded, I would appreciate just a quick email to council, just to let us know that that's happened, because this has been a long time in coming. So, I'm glad to hear that you've had your approvals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, Counsel Leahy is prepared to move this. Be it resolved that the presentation made by M. Gassan regarding the Sharon inline storage solution be received. All those in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and have a great day.
Thank you.
Enjoy this afternoon.
We are at item G, and that's council committees, boards, board and groups. And we have E. Jackson of the Environmental Advisory Committee is here today for the presentation and memo summary of EAC activities 2022 to 2024. Two good years. Welcome. Good to have you with us.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of council, town staff, and residents of East Gullimberry. Thank you for standing with the environment. My name is Elaine Jackson. I am a volunteer member of the Environmental Advisory Committee, which is currently composed of nine volunteer members of the public, Counselor Crone, and staff member Chris Ross, who is the Environmental Initiatives Program Manager. I began following environmental issues in the '80s and became much more concerned after reading The World Scientist's Warning to Humanity in 1992. If only we had taken action back then. In 2024, it was the officially hottest year on record. We've crossed the 1.5 threshold for the first time, and carbon emissions are still rising. It appears that global warming is accelerating faster than expected, which could lead to catastrophic consequences on a much shorter timeline. We have already experienced local ice storms and wildfire smoke in 2025, so it's getting very real and very distressing. Obviously, what's going on in the U.S. with scientists being silenced, the tools we need to track climate being dismantled, and environmentally progressive policies and protections being rolled back, it's a grim time. But outside of North America, there are many positive developments. China has become a climate leader and plans to add 500 gigawatts of wind and solar in 2025, giving clean power a 48% share in total capacity, overtaking coal and gas for the first time. Chinese emissions are dropping. A quiet climate revolution is also taking place in India, Pakistan, and many other countries across the globe. Solar was the largest source of electricity in the European Union for the first time this June. New advances in battery technology mean that storage capacity has increased by 76%, and the cost of energy storage has dropped by 95%. Batteries and solar panels are becoming much more recyclable, with predictions that by 2050, there may no longer be a need to mine critical minerals. Renewable energy has become much cheaper than fossil fuels and much quicker to install, so there are many reasons to hope. This presentation today is an update regarding the work that the advisory committee and Town of East Gullimberry has accomplished on the environmental front in the past two years. It is an opportunity to reflect on the positive steps the town has taken towards a greener future. I apologize that the slides are in a slightly different order than the memo and have decided to go with the order of the slides. So, first slide, please. In May 2022, the committee developed a pollinator awareness campaign, which included No Mo/Slo Mo May, along with becoming a designated Butterfly Way Project community with 15 gardens and growing, so 15 participant gardens. Slide two, please. The EAC brought forth a motion to council requesting the declaration of a climate emergency in February 2023, and this motion was passed unanimously. Slide three, please. With the proceeds of No Mo May in 2022, a community pollinator garden was created at the River Drive Park Community Center in Holland Landing. And slide four. This is a map showing EG's Butterfly Way Gardens on the project's website. Slide five. This is regarding Earth Day. In 2023, EAC volunteers celebrated Earth Day by promoting No Mo May and community cleanups at the sports complex in April. In 2024, to celebrate Earth Week, we assisted with organizing and support for the first East Gullimberry Eco Fair, as well as assisting with and attending community cleanups throughout the town. Slide six, please. Heat pumps. On November 27, 2023, we organized and facilitated a public information session on heat pumps and greener home energy grants, which was attended by more than 50 members of the public. On June 20, 2024, EAC presented a request to council to promote clean energy sources and encourage the installation and use of heat pumps as alternatives to fossil gas. And as the owner of an air-source heat pump, I can highly recommend them. Our heating costs are one-third of what we used to pay, and our carbon footprint is significantly smaller. Slide seven, please. November 19, 2024, we advocated and played a role within the community to support the staff direction and build support for enacting staff direction and build support for enacting the Tree Protection Bylaw passed by council. Slide eight. This is a summary of the places where community cleanups have taken place, and they usually happen every Earth Week and hopefully will continue to happen. Slide nine, please. In May and June of 2023, some of our members collaborated with the Environmental Initiatives booth at the farmer's market, providing native flower seedlings and information on environmental stewardship stewardship to residents. So there were two events. On March 5, 2024, we provided input and feedback towards the development of East Gullimbury's Thinking Green environmental strategy, which were unanimously approved by council. And on November 7, 2024, we supported the town initiative for the home energy retrofit orientation. In conclusion, members of the environmentally advise, I'm sorry, Environmental Advisory Council want to thank council, staff, and members of the public for their ongoing support in promoting green initiatives, tackling climate change, enhancing local bylaws, cleaning up the environment, and striving to be a municipal leader on the environment. There is much more to be done in the coming weeks, months, and years as climate change intensifies. With your ongoing support, members of the EAC look forward to finding solutions to some of the most complex issues of our time. Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and residents, we thank you for your efforts. Let's keep up the momentum for the rest of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Comments? Questions? Counsel Lehey, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I would like to first say that I believe in the democratic process, and so I will be voting to receive your presentation of the work that has been done by the Environmental Advisory Committee. However, I would like to point out a few items in your preamble to your slide presentation in which you presented some information that, in my opinion, is only reflective of one side of the issue of climate change. And so I would like to respectfully suggest that we work in an inclusive municipality in which the opinions of many people are to be taken into consideration. And I will use as one example of of what you mentioned in your preamble about the there is no longer a need to mine critical minerals. I think that there are other perspectives that could be shared, and that it is our duty in municipal government to work with all levels of government to improve the environment. And but specifically with regard to items that have taken place on the council agenda of this term, you referred to the Tree Bylaw and building community support for the Tree Bylaw. And I think it would be a dereliction of my duty if I didn't point out that during that Tree Law Tree Bylaw debate, that there was a petition presented to council of more than 200 people who were had a different perspective on the Tree Bylaw, and that their voice needs to be heard and that their perspective needs to be heard. So I would like to respectfully suggest that we keep in mind that volunteers on advisory committees are engaged, and we are grateful for their engagement. However, we need to include a variety of perspectives when we're taking into consideration on council of of information and decisions that are are being taken under advisement. So thank you very much for your presentation again, and I'm happy to move this to receive it, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Counsel Crone, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you to our presenter, Elaine. Thank you so much for coming here, and thank you for all the hard work that you and the team do to help support the cause of the environment. You know, I I was a founding member of that committee back thirty seven years ago, and I'm so proud of the work that's been done. There are serious, serious dangers facing this planet that we have to face and this council has to face, you know. And if we don't do anything about it, we're going to pay the price. I think of the old expression, think globally but act locally. And the planet is under attack. It's on fire, and it's important for us to all do our part. And, you know, companies, I used to work in the insurance industry, as people are sick of hearing, and we understood what was happening to the planet. And that's why, when you look at places like Florida, for instance, you have insurance companies that are pulling out of the market because governments refuse to act. And so that this will be the choice confronted with all of us at some point. We can either mitigate, or we can adapt. And guess what, folks? There's a cost to both. So pick your poison. We're going to have to pay for this at some time. I I do have to respond, though, to a to a comment that was made by my colleague about a a petition that was made earlier around the Tree Bylaw. And yes, there were people that had different perspectives, but I would I would say, and I've spoken to some people that's actually signed that petition, they were given information that was not complete or, you know, I hate to say it, perhaps a tad misleading, that they would have to, for instance, they were told that they would have to take out a permit to cut every tree down. And we know that's not true. And so when you take a you have to factor in this as elected members, you have to factor that in, is the information being provided to the public in a fulsome manner? And in that case, I don't think it was. So I again, I'll just finish off by thanking you for all the hard work you do at the committee. I know there's so much more that you would like to do, but time is always a problem. And but you know what? It's appreciated for everything that you do for us. It's very selfless. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counsel Cruthers.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation and all that you do. It's I was the council liaison prior to Counsel Crone, and I sat on the committee as a resident for many years before that. And seeing the work that's been accomplished, a lot of this was started last term. I actually, when I saw your report, I had to go back and and look it up. Was that really 2023? I thought it was earlier than that. So some of these initiatives took years to get get through. And when another, actually, I think it's the next item on the agenda, is about our committees of council, and some of them, we've had staff be able to pick up the ton and run with it. And this one, we still need our residents to keep poking us and saying, here's what you need to do. Here's the things that are available. And the leadership of Chris Ross on this file is is phenomenal, but we we need your group to keep pushing us on these things. The heat pump presentations were amazing. I have a heat pump myself, and, you know, as a sign of climate change, we never needed air conditioning until recently, so I'm glad to have my heat pump to provide that air conditioning that we need. Thursday, it's going to feel like 43, if you can believe it. So, you know, climate change is not an opinion. We all feel it for sure. And again, I just wanted to thank you, but at the same time, we're not reopening the Tree Bylaw debate. And if we're both sides in it, then when that petition was presented, I didn't hear the environmental side being presented at the same time. So this is the Environment Committee talking about the benefits for the environment, and I appreciate you presenting that. Thank you.
Counsel Lehey, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I have to speak up and correct that. The environmental side was indeed, and I had no intention to open up the Tree Bylaw discussion again, but the environmental side was discussed when the Chair of the Environmental Committee made a deputation during that debate when the petition was was presented. So and for my fellow counselor to say that the governments refuse to act is simply also inaccurate, because our governments, both at the federal, provincial, you said no, Counsel Crone. Yes, you did. I wrote it down as you said it. Governments refuse to act.
Yeah.
If governments refuse to act. Well, governments are acting. And so my apologies, I didn't hear the word if, but governments are responding, and and that this is an issue that there are multiple perspectives on, and that I agree that there is much more work to be done to protect the environment. However, I cannot sit here and just simply allow the opinions of a volunteer committee to be accepted as if they are fact. All of the points that they made are not necessarily fact. So there can be misinformation or misunderstandings on both sides of the debate, and there can be multiple perspectives. So I would like the listeners and the other residents in the community to understand that their voices are also heard, in addition to those on the volunteer committee. And I would also like to act because ask, because I have been asked by one of the residents of the community, actually, I've been asked by more than one resident of the community, I would like to ask staff if they can clarify on the town website by putting the names of the members of the volunteer committees on the town website so that other members of the community can can know who is serving on these committees, all of the committees, including the Environmental Committee. I think it would be helpful to people if they knew which members of the community were on all committees. And so I would, because at the beginning of the presentation, it was mentioned that there are nine volunteers on the committee, and so I would like to know the names of the nine volunteers on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counsel Roy DiClemente first, and then, I believe, Counsel Cruthers. No, okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council unanimously voted to appoint residents from our community who wanted to volunteer on our committees as subject matter experts to advise us on matters relating to, in this case, the environment. On other cases, it has to do with trails or broadband or arts and culture. And so the residents who serve on this committee, first of all, their names are on the public record, because we passed a bylaw appointing them. So there's an appointment bylaw that would list their names. Beyond that, I, sorry, I I just I the the point today is to receive an update from our volunteer committee about the good work that they have done and the recommendations they have shared with us, the projects they have undertaken. It is not for us to be debating prior decisions or the context in which those decisions were made. And so for me, I just want to profoundly thank Ms. Jackson and the rest of the the rest of the committee for the work that they have done in trying to make our community a better place, and I would like to move that we call the question.
But it has already been moved. All in favor? I believe we are at item H, and we we have Corporate Services with Counsel Cruthers in the chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have one item on the agenda today, and it's a nice big one that we've had before us before about our committees of council. And I'm going to ask General Manager Gandhi to take us through this. Thank you.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. The item before you is with regards to committees of council, and I I'm hoping it brings us to a place of of agreement around the next stage of our journey with committees of council. The recommendations are noted below. I will say that none of these recommendations were arrived at lightly. There was consultation with members of council, consultation with committee members. I want to acknowledge Kitty Bavington for her work, as well as our town solicitor and clerk and their support of this work. We have essentially formed a staff working group as per council direction previously and have arrived at these recommendations that are before you. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Can I get a mover? Counsel Crone.
Madam Chair, if I may, I'm happy to move this, but I would respectfully request that we delete paragraph three about the deletion of the broadband working group. I think we still have some work to do and would like to see it stay in place until the end of the term.
Thank you. I had so I have a mover. Any discussion on this? Counsel Roy DiClemente.
Thank you. Perhaps then if we, instead of saying that effective immediately, the broadband working group be dissolved, perhaps we could simply say that the broadband working group be dissolved at the end of this council term. That would be what I would suggest. For me, there was a couple of items that I thought were important to note. Our library board was a little bit absent from this report. They're in a slightly different governance model, but I feel like, given that a lot of people consider the library board, it's also a volunteer position, I think that this document needs to also reflect, or at least acknowledge, that governance structure and ensure that they are also provided training on code of conduct, the Municipal Conflict of Interest Act, and the and the Integrity Commissioner as well, because because they are covered by that. And then for me, I'd also like to suggest that the Engaged EG Volunteer Program, which is obviously done through Parks and Recreation, but that we would consider updating the intake forms so that we get a little bit more information from our residents who would like to volunteer if they have a particular interest, so that if we had a project that we needed feedback on, that we could tap into some of those areas of interest, rather than simply somebody who wants to come and roll their sleeves up, which is also perfectly acceptable and appreciated. So that I'd like to see sort of that helping there. And the the draft policy in section 12.4 says that the council liaison is not ineligible. So there's a double negative there. I think that the council liaison is ineligible to be Chair, Vice Chair, et cetera. And I'd also like some discussion around the farmer's market. And if if we're going to be removing that committee and putting it under that under staff, I'd like to have some reporting on a regular basis from them on on how it's going, I guess. It's not just it's not enough just at budget time, I think, you know, before the season starts and after the season ends. I know that the market has struggled, and I want to make sure that we're not just spinning our wheels or that we're able to support that event and make sure that it's as successful as it can be. So those are my my feedbacks, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. And to your I see your hand. About the farmer's market, I was council liaison for that, and we struggled getting vendors to sit on it. How the terms of reference were set up is that you had to have equal number of residents as vendors, and we could get no vendors to sit on that working group. But I did find the meetings were very important from a directional point of view, and and I would be very much in favor of having a pre and post presentation to CWC on the farmer's market with financials. Obviously, we can do it during budget time, but there's a lot on our plate at budget time. This is pretty small potatoes compared to what else we have to deal with. So I think it would be wise to have that come to CWC outside of the budget cycle so that we can really dive into it. Because I think you're right, that the the market struggles, and there's a lot of money that goes into it, and we should we should be looking at it as a council. Counsel Lehey.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. My question is a follow-up from a question from the information provided by Counselor Roy DiClemente. The reason I'm asking is because I'd like to seek clarification from our from the the authors of the report and from our town solicitor, because I know that you have worked very hard for two years on this. And so when the Integrity Commissioner visited us and made her presentation, she said the question was asked by the same counselor whether or not the library board was accountable to the code of conduct. And the answer of the Integrity Commissioner was no, because as the counselor has stated, they are in a
because as the counselor has stated, they are in a different governance model. So could we please have clarification? Because it was just stated that they are also governed by our code of conduct, but that's not my understanding. So could you provide some clarification on the governance model of the library and whether or not they should be included in this report? Thank you.
Ms. Ingram?
Through you, Madam Chair. That's correct, Counselor Leahy. The, the library board is excluded under this particular legislation in the municipal act with respect to these issues. So they have not been part of this file.
I'm wondering if the, go ahead, Counselor Roy DeClemente.
So this, of course, having sat on the library board since 2007, this is confusing, obviously. So the report should then be more explicit in stating that. And we, at some point, need to have a conversation then about how we ensure that our library board is also adhering to some form of a code of conduct then. Because up until this point, you know, we've, we've gotten lucky. We haven't had any issues. But we need, we do need clarification then on whether it's, whether it's training for them or whether it's not, they're not involved. It needs to say that explicitly.
And that's what I, how I took your comments to mean that when we're talking about all our committees of council, and library board's not even spoken about, I think just a paragraph in there saying what the reality is around that would be helpful if this report comes back. Counselor Leahy?
Yes, thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair, following up on that. Well, we have no way of determining whether or not there have been any issues with regard to code of conduct because there hasn't been any, any clear path. They haven't had a document to work with. So whether or not that's happened in the past, we can only hope that we can improve the situation in the present and moving forward in the future. So, but with regard to the farmer's market, I also wanted to make some comments with regard, because it also is discussing the Santa Claus parade as well. So I have personally spoken with the, with the, for many vendors who used to work in the, you know, have a table at the farmer's market. And I've received feedback from other farmers, and I've attended other farmer's markets. So I think, I think this document that the, that the staff have presented and worked on for more than two years, there's always room for tweaking and improving. And my understanding of it is that if we need to form a new committee in the future, that, that's always available to us as an option, or some other form of a committee. But at this stage, I think that the recommendations are appropriate and that we take a step back and that we think about how we want to organize the farmer's market and the Santa Claus parade in the future. And I would also like to say that we also have a program at the town that we don't discuss or necessarily promote often enough, as I think we should, which is Engage EG for volunteers. And I'm wondering if staff can speak to Engage EG for volunteers so that if there are members of the community who want to join, help out with the town and be engaged with the town, that they are aware of what their options are if we are dissolving some of these committees or changing some of these community groups. So could the staff speak to Engage EG as an opportunity for members of the community to volunteer? Not necessarily on a committee, but still volunteer for the Town of East Gwynnebury?
I believe that was already raised by Counselor Roy DeClemente. Ms. Gandhi, did you want to add anything to that?
I will, actually, there's a couple of points that I would just like to cover. In terms of the policy, sorry, the document and the library board, there is mention of the library board within the document and the fact that the policy specifically does not apply to the library board. So I just wanted to point that out. And in terms of Engage EG, that is a program that our Parks, Recreation and Culture Department runs, and I welcome any input from the general manager.
Mr. Carmerson, did you want to speak to Engage EG?
Through you, Madam Chair. Engage EG has a focus of supplementing our Parks, Recreation and Culture programs and special events with a volunteer base. We've grown that base to up over 150 active volunteers that are registered, trained, provided town guidelines as far as volunteering, along with people unbelowing. The suggestion, or the suggested augmentation to the, to the policy would be to include with the intake form of, for Engage EG, a, some type of a call to action for other committees of council, which could be undertaken administratively.
Thank you. And the application for Engage EG, how does that work? How is it filled out? Because I know for the committees of council, we've gone to an online, very formal process.
Through you, Madam Chair. There's opportunities online, and there's also opportunities in person at each of our recreation facilities.
Thank you. My, my comment on this, I'm glad where we've landed on this. But I did want to make a comment about the application process. We've heard from our volunteers that's too burdensome. And as a council liaison, I've had so many applications that are people who think it's a paid position, despite it saying it's volunteered, people who are out of the area. So I do think we need to move back to that two-page, very simple application form. And hopefully, by cutting back the number of committees that we have, it'll be easier for staff to manage. I know going to the online forum was due to the, just the sheer volume. So I'm hoping that we can relook at the application form in advance of next term when we do, do the call out again. Is there any other comments? Counselor Roy DeClemente, and then Counselor Crone?
Thank you. Actually, Counselor Crone has not had an opportunity to speak, so I'd prefer to yield the floor to him, and then I'll speak afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I might steal your points. A couple of points. I think we need to have a, a hard conversation, an uncomfortable conversation about the, the future of the farmer's market. I think we asked, we have to ask ourselves some questions about whether, excuse me, whether it's viable, are we keeping it on life support unnecessarily? Or is there some things we can do that will re- re- energize it, reinvigorate it? I just throw that out there. I think we need to have some, some really frank conversations about the future of the farmer's market. I love the concept of it, and I would hate to see it disappear, but I think we have to be, you know, we have to be realistic about it, too. The second point I wanted to make is around the community groups. And I support that we're taking them out of, you know, our care because they would have been subject to, you know, code of conduct and all that. And there's, there's a lot of good reasons for taking them, letting them stand alone. We, I still think that we have an obligation to those members to provide a facility or mechanism that can provide some directors and officers insurance for them. Because if we don't protect them from their, from possible liability claims, no one's going to volunteer. And so I would, I would hope we can do something in that respect. Not looking for an answer today. I'm throwing that out there for consideration for the future. Thank you.
Ms. Gandhi?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the, the recommendation is to, for that transition to happen, not immediately. It would happen in January of 2026. And through the next very short period of time, we will come up with a transition plan that would, with an aim to have as little disruption as possible to those committees and groups as possible. And in fact, we've heard some favorable responses about them not having to do agendas and minutes and all of those kinds of things. So we will work together with Parks, Recreation and Culture. We've already had some preliminary conversations. And we will address all of the items that you, that Counselor Crone has, has raised. Thank you.
So Counselor Crone, would you like to add to your motion about the farmer's market that a presentation to council, pre and post-market with financials is presented annually?
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Okay. I haven't heard from Counselor Foster or Counselor Johns. Did either of you have anything to add? Nothing? Nothing? Counselor Leahy? And then, oh, sorry. It was Counselor Roy DeClemente first.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to add, put a bit of flesh on the bones regarding Counselor Crone's comments for the community groups. I think we need to tread very carefully. I suspect that we, I know that some of our community groups have known that we're looking at it, and, but there hasn't been any formal decision. So now that we're moving forward with this decision, I think we need to be handling those groups with kid gloves. And it may even be helpful for us to implement some sort of a memorandum of understanding with those groups so that they have the terms of engagement. So they know how many times they can rent our facilities and at what cost, and so on, from that perspective. And I did also notice that the library CEO has put her camera on. So I didn't know if she, she didn't put her hand up, but I didn't know if she wanted to weigh in on the library board governance and so on. So I, I just wanted to point that out, and I, I'm sorry if I've outed you unnecessarily, Sandra.
Go ahead, Ms. Adore.
Thank you so much, Counselor Cruthers and Counselor Roy DeClemente. Yes, the library board is governed by their library board bylaws, which do address the conduct. And so there has been inquiry, both from residents of East Gwynnebury, and there was some discussion earlier regarding this. And that was the response that was provided and a copy of the bylaw. Those bylaws are updated and have most recently been updated February as of 2025 by the board.
Thank you. Thank you. There's been talk about the transition of the community groups, and I'm going to come back to you to see if there, if you want to add something to the motion on that.
I don't think I need to add it. I just wanted to make sure that, that staff understood and that we made the point that these are some pretty important people to our community who build spirit, and we want to make sure that we are respecting them as we go through this process. So I don't think it needs an additional.
Additional, okay.
It's just direction.
Yeah. So I would think that council would probably want some sort of report back on what the transition looks like before the end of the year, if that's okay. Yeah, okay. Counselor Leahy?
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair. So just one final comment and one last question. So with regard, I have also served on the library board. And when I served on the library board, there was no training in terms of code of conduct, et cetera, that I was aware of. And so I think that this is an opportunity for all, all members of the public and all volunteers on, on all boards to have an educational component to the roles and responsibilities when they are serving in, in those positions. So I'd like to know from staff if part of the transition plan moving forward incorporates training and education for our current volunteers and a, a program that would be offered to, or may, perhaps made mandatory to future volunteers on committees, while at the same time recognizing that our volunteers are wonderful and our staff have done a tremendous amount of work to benefit both the municipality and volunteers who, who contribute to our communities so that everyone is on the same page, everyone has the same, you know, the understanding of the roles and the rights and the responsibilities. And so building in education about the code of conduct is an opportunity that benefits everyone, whether they're volunteers, counselors, or staff. So I want to commend staff on the tremendous amount of work that they have done on this very complex issue incorporating all different types of committees and groups. And I look forward to having documents that provide that same clarity to all residents of the entire municipality. And speaking to that point, I would like to ask for clarity on when fellow counselors have mentioned that everybody should know who's on every committee, there are still quite a number of committees. It's not just like there's one committee. There are multiple committees and groups. And we go into closed session as council whenever we're approving someone to join a committee or whenever someone is deciding to resign, for whatever reason, to come off a committee. And so that is done confidential, in a confidential manner, in closed session. So when someone says that, that you can just, you know, it's public information and just find it for yourself, well, I think it's unreasonable to expect that a resident in the community who is curious about, okay, who's on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, or I might want to join a certain committee in the future, if they can't just go to the town website, click on a tab and see, okay, here's this committee, and here, here's the chair, here's the council liaison, here's the list of the volunteers who are on the committee, I think that that would be of great service and another opportunity to communicate clearly with residents so that any resident can know at any time by searching on our website with a list under the, each committee, because that's public information. And so I think that that would also be helpful to fellow counselors about knowing who's on committees, because there are so many resignations, there's so much movement, and there's so much, you know, additions and people stepping down, that it is unrealistic to expect everybody to, in the community, to keep up with all of those changes. So I would like to ask if this is already built into the, the plan moving forward that the members of the committee, and it's public information who's on these committees, if that information is easily accessible to the residents of the municipality.
And who would like to take that?
Through you, Madam Chair. It is not a, a task that is impossible to do. We could certainly add the lists of the individuals who are on the committee. So I would take direction from council on that.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'd like to add that to the, to what we're discussing today because I believe that we're already improving and updating our website. And so for all members of the municipality, including council members and staff, to be able to go to a list and then just be able to very quickly see who's on a committee. Because residents also need to be aware that they have the right to attend any committee that they like to and that they can contact the town clerk and find out when the meetings are taking place and what the, what the criteria are around attending a meeting.
If you're moving, if you're moving an amendment to the motion, can you put it on the floor, please?
Yes, okay. I'd like to put on the floor that, that staff update the current members of all of the committees and groups so that it is an accurate representation and everybody has easy access to that information on our, on our town website for all committees.
And, and do you want that, the staff to undertake that work for this, this last year? Or should we, is that something that would be best done at the beginning of next term when we have our new committees, so they're not doing this work for such a short period of time?
I, well, I believe that, because it's constantly needing updating, because people, you know, people pass away, people, you know.
You made the point, yes. You made the point.
Yes. You know, change. I would say as of today. And then as of today, moving forward, if someone passes away or someone steps down or someone is added, that it'd be updated.
You want the, you want staff to undertake that work now, even though there's not much time left on this term?
Well, yes, I believe it's important because we're heading into the budget deliberations in the fall. So I think that people need to have access to information. We, we work in a, we have banners up on our walls that talk about culture, municipal excellence and transparency.
You've moved a motion, an amendment to this motion. And I'm going to ask if anyone wants to speak to the amendment. Counselor Johns?
Thanks, Madam Chair. I, I wholeheartedly agree with the spirit of what Counselor Leahy is saying. I will say that it might be a good idea to have, refer to staff for comment with regards to confidentiality. Like I know, for instance, in the workplace, simply even posting a schedule with, with folks' names in, in a lunchroom is in violation of certain, certain rules. And so while I wholly agree with the spirit of it, I guess what I'm simply asking is, is that is there a procedure which needs to be enacted with the volunteers of the committee? If, if this committee so chooses to, to take that direction, I would strongly suggest that our staff be involved in looking for disclosure from the volunteers within the committee prior to that occurring because I don't want to be in violation of anybody's confidentiality.
And I agree, and that's why I was suggesting that perhaps it begins with the next term so it can be part of the, the form that they fill out that shows that they, they understand it's going to be published. Counselor Crone?
Yeah, I, I appreciate the conversation, through you, Madam Chair. I was, think, along the same lines in the application for these forms, do they give their consent? I was think along the same lines in the application for these forms, do they give their consent in their application forms to share their names and or contact information? If they don't, we would have to then request it, so.
Ms. Gandhi.
Through you, Madam Chair, my understanding is that the names are published when the bylaws when they're pointed to the position. So there there is a record of the individuals once they're pointed to the to the committees. That being said, it's not consolidated in a central location and and so I would recommend that we take that back and and work with the clerks department to determine that we're we're being appropriate around the privacy rules before we take any action.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
So through you, Madam Chair, may I rephrase the the motion?
Absolutely.
I would like to rephrase the motion to say that we direct staff to pursue a consolidated and centrally located database of the names of publicly known names of members of the committees and that they in the future be made more easily accessible in what in in a manner that is is accessible to the public.
Okay.
Yeah.
That motion is on the floor. I will be voting no to that because I believe that's something that we should look at for next term. I think it's a lot of work for staff to undertake, given that there's not a lot of time left in this term. But if anyone else has any comments on this amendment? If not, I'll take you've already spoken. I'm going to call the question on it. All in favor of this is just Counselor Leahy's amendment. All in favor? Opposed? And that does not carry. But Ms. Gandhi, perhaps you can take the message from from counsel that's something to look at for the new term and looking at having that disclosure rate on their forms. Okay, so that brings us back to the main motion, and I think we've exhausted that. I'm going to quick if you can put it up on the screen, I'm going to quickly go through it for those following along at home. Just briefly, we're receiving the report effective immediately, the Road Watch Working Group and Seniors Working Group will be dissolved, that the broadband working group will be dissolved at the end of the term effective immediately, the farmer's market, Sandclaus Parade are dissolved, and the Parks and Rec Department will assume responsibility for delivery of these events, and that effective January 2026, governance of the town community groups migrate from communities of council to independent groups, and that is the Hall and Landing Community Group, North Union Community Group, Queensville Sharon Community Group, and the River Drive Park Community Group. And that the policy for statutory and advisory committees attached as Appendix C to the report will which establishes a governance framework to ensure the town statutory advisory committees operate in a transparent and accountable and consistent manner be adopted, and that the terms of reference template attached as Appendix D to the report, which establishes mandates and responsibilities be adopted. And hold on, this is very small. And that the presentation that a presentation before and after the farmer's market season be provided to the committee of the whole with financial information. No comments, no further comments, all in favor? Opposed? And that carries. And with that, Madam Mayor, I will turn it back to you. Thank you. And thank you to staff. I should just before I turn it back, I should thank staff for the incredible amount of work that's put into this. It's been a long slug, and I know we're not quite there yet, but I think it's we've gotten a long ways and hopefully there's a little bit off your shoulders juggling so many committees. So thank you.
We are at item I, Development Services, with Counselor Roy de Clemente and the Chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have a number of items on the agenda today, three on the prepared agenda. The first one is another big a big project that staff have undertaken, which is bylaw branch report DS 2025 dash 22, which is a revised signed bylaw. Mr. Krupnik, would you care to introduce this, please? And before I do that, I'll just ask if there's anyone who would like to make a motion to put it on the table. Moved by Counselor Leahy. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Krupnik, please take it away.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. This is an initiative that started several months back, led by our bylaw team. I do have a member of our bylaw here team here today with me to provide a little update to to counsel on this updated signed bylaw, signed bylaw amendment. So it, you know, it's gone under a fairly robust set of public outreach as well as a survey, and it's taken several months to really get it to a place where we feel comfortable coming before counsel and speaking to some of the amendments. Certainly, certainly, there may still be questions for members of counsel. We're here today, ready and prepared to answer some of those and clarify some of the areas in which clarification is needed on that bylaw. So if I can, I would bring up to the podium my colleague, Mr. Herinder.
Welcome, Mr. Singh. Thank you very much for being here, and please take it away.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, Honorable Mayor, members of counsel, senior management team, staff, and the members of public. To walk you through the report, the draft signed bylaw has been proposed to modernize existing regulations, respond to public interest, and align with best practices, particularly in regard to electronic signage. Due to the extensive scope of the bylaw, I'll concentrate on summarizing some of its main highlights. So the proposed sign bylaw establishes a comprehensive framework for regulating signs in the town, emphasizing safety, aesthetics, compliance with provincial legislation. It mandates permits for most signs, outlines detailed application requirements, and allows exemptions for specific sign types such as small residential, real estate, and community signs. The bylaw prohibits certain signs for safety and visual reasons, particularly in public areas and village core zones. It includes tailored regulations for residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, agricultural, heritage properties which require additional review by the appropriate committees, and rural zones addressing size, location, illumination, and design. Provisions for electronic and third-party advertising signs provide strict criteria, including subject to permit requirements, light controls, and setbacks. The bylaw also provides for sign removal provisions, variance requests through a more efficient process by means of staff review and appeals process through an appeals committee, also including maintenance standards of signs, enforcement mechanisms, and penalties. While nonconforming signs must eventually comply if altered, the town will further retain the right to inspect, remove, or order changes to signs that violate the draft bylaw. This bylaw reflects best practices across the municipal board, community, and stakeholder input that showed approximately 74% of residents supporting the proposed bylaw goals and ensuring that the signage supports business and communication needs while preserving safety and community character. We recognize that the draft bylaw includes a significant number of proposed changes and additions. We are more than happy to offer any educational support or clarifications as needed. With that, I'm open to any questions anyone has.
Thank you. Members of committee, any questions? Counselor Leahy, go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. I want to acknowledge that this is an important policy update that we are undergoing considering the importance of modernizing while trying to balance the needs of the community, especially in heritage districts. So I thank you for the work that you have done on this. And I wanted to thank Madam Mayor for accepting a very last minute letter of correspondence that I received yesterday after 5:00 PM, which I have forwarded to to staff, the mayor, and and counsel, and it has been added to the agenda of the council meeting this afternoon. But I wanted to I do have a couple of questions for you, Mr. Singh. So my first question is with regard to you have researched best practices across the municipal board. So you're saying other neighboring municipalities? For clarity, I'd like to know because it's my understanding that Bradford, Georgina, other parts of York region have digital billboard bylaws already in place and that Newmarket is currently undergoing a review of their signed bylaws as well. So to the question of a 30-day permit cycle, is that do you see that as being an obstacle to a long-term investment by businesspeople and small businesses in our community?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. Yes, through public consultation, we did receive some feedback on the 30-day permit duration, and as a result of that feedback, it was considered and was changed in the proposed bylaw, specifically Section 20.2. Has been amended to reflect those changes to a one-year duration.
Okay, and is my understanding correct? Thank you for that. With other municipalities like Bradford and Georgina, it's five years rather than one year?
From my sorry, through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy, unfortunately, Georgina does not have any permit regulations for electronic signs that are are based off of a year permit. It's a one-time fee from what I understand. And with respect to other one-year permit durations, City of Toronto, I believe Mississauga, and Pickering also follow a similar suit.
Okay, thank you very much. That was the most important question that I had because I'm all about removing red tape and improving things for small businesses, so we have to be realistic. And I thought it was previously it was unrealistic to consider a 30-day permit that in terms of paperwork and and fees, et cetera. So so I'm glad to see that that is has been extended to one year now. And in terms of mandatory ad-by-ad consent, would you speak to that and on what the municipality is proposing?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy, the intent behind the consent requirement has for Section 20.4 of the proposed bylaw is to ensure that third-party advertisements are placed with transparency and accountability, particularly where content may reference or represent a business or a group or individual within the community or outside. This approach was included to help prevent particularly misuse of names or logos or affiliations without knowledge or approval, especially in contexts where reputational concerns may arise. Furthermore, this almost reiterates the town's interest to align with other governing legislations such as Ad Standards Canada.
Okay, through you, Madam Chair. So I have a follow-up question. It's my understanding that the the owners of digital billboards already align with and meet all of the standards in the industry regarding approving ads. So if you if say, for example, I'll just give you a hypothetical situation, say someone who runs a digital billboard, the the fact that it's digital means that within a very quick, a short amount of time, they could turn around and put up a a notice, say there was an emergency, or say there was something or or an event that was taking place and there was only three days, it was only three days in advance that someone wanted to put an ad on this digital board. So if they are already meeting the standards of, you know, content, et cetera, and logo use, et cetera, why would there be another hurdle put in the place to then, I assume, go back to the digital billboard owner to then go to every single advertiser if they needed to make a last-minute change in a date or something changed with an event? How how would this process feasibly work in terms of time efficiency if for every ad that was posted, they had to go through yet another level of approval at the municipality?
Thank you for that question. Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. This process can be streamlined with permit administration once the bylaw is approved. For example, each business can use one consent form for the permit duration, which would last up to a year. A list of consents at the beginning of the permit application submissions is usually ideal, and it's to cover liability for the town because we are issuing a permit to a company at the end of the day.
Thank you. Okay. Through you, Madam Chair. So that's three questions. At this point, I'm just going to open the floor to see if anyone else has any questions. Otherwise, I'll I'll ask if you have any further. Members of committee, Counselor Carruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. There is a lot of work put into this. This is a huge document. Just reading it took a great deal of time. I can't imagine how long it took you to put it together. I I really appreciate like all the municipal comparators you did and and finding a way for us to land on something that made sense for EG. Given the size of this and the number of questions, I'm wondering if this is something that Madam Mayor that we could bring back as a workshop in the fall to to look at. A chance for us to be more interactive and perhaps a presentation for residents that really zooms in on the pieces of this that would apply to them. There's a whole business component, and I know Counselor Leahy is getting at a lot of that about the the digital stuff, but for the average resident, I'm wondering if we can put together a bit of a presentation that talks about real estate signs and lawn signs and and the types of things the average resident would look at and put that together with an opportunity for us to have a more in-depth dialogue as as we digest this because every question that's raised, I have two more questions. So I I mentioned, Madam Mayor, I know Counselor Roy de Clemente is in the chair, but I'm just thinking as from a scheduling point of view. My questions are around the fines, starting at $500. To me, as a resident, would be very scary that if I put out a lawn sign for No More May, am I going to get a $500 fine for it? So I would want I understand we we start with education, and we want to be able to get the big offenders, hit them in their pocketbook. But I'm wondering if we can have a bit of a sliding scale, that there's a a business fine, but then there's like a resident fine that's much lower. I also would like to talk about how some of these changes are because of lack of a local newspaper. So there is a need for more Kerbeck signs. There's a need for when the library does the annual book sale, we're putting out lawn signs. And, you know, how are those impacted by any of these changes? So I would I would love an opportunity to really dive into this in more depth in a workshop format. Thank you.
Any thoughts, Mr. Singh? Would that be something you would be open to putting together for us?
Absolutely. It is a it is a pretty comprehensive document, significantly lengthy in nature, involving a number of factors and expertise from different external and internal sections. So yes, absolutely, more than willing to put together a workshop.
Thank you. I think just I see your hand. For me, I had lots of questions as well, and when we undertake an initiative like this that's so comprehensive, often staff come to us and meet with us ward by ward to get an understanding of what those questions are. You've there's there's a good reason behind every clause that you've put into this sign bylaw, and and for us to be able to understand what that looks like for the average resident and for the businesses, I think that it will help us educate the public as well. So, you know, have a having an opportunity to speak one-on-one with you and then having a a future workshop, I think would be helpful. For me, it was I don't I'm I'm leery of the electronic signs, but if we can put them in regional corridors, and if you gave me a map of where they could go and where they couldn't go, then I'd have a better understanding and be able to support it more. So I think that might be that might be the best way of approaching this. I have Counselor Crone and then Counselor Leahy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I just want to add to my my colleagues, they've raised a lot of good questions. I think my wardmate has has raised some very good questions on behalf of the industry. And I agree, we need to we need to get those nailed down. I I think I early on in this process, I was urging speed and but I think in the in the notion of getting there fast or getting there right, I think we need to get our of getting there fast or getting there right, I think we need to get it right. So, if we are to do a workshop or anything like that, I would say let's prioritize that, and we really can't afford to waste much more time on this. I'd like to see it approved, but we need to get it right. I would also encourage that we engage the advertising industry in this as well, so we can benefit from there. I know you have engaged with them, but what we can do, you know, every effort to make that we get a full, comprehensive input from everyone would be appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Leahy, and then I'd like to make a statement as well. Go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. My very last question. For the benefit of everyone, would you please clarify if the new signed bylaws will impact the next election campaign in 2026?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. The elections component of the signs is completely separate from the signed bylaw. We do have an approved election signed bylaw that is currently active. So, back to your question, no.
Okay. So, further to that, what is the best practice of municipalities? Is it to have a separate lines on or sign law or bylaws separate when it's an election? Or are they typically all included at the, in one signed bylaw?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. It varies from municipality to municipality. Some smaller townships have separate bylaws that are already effective, so they choose to keep them separate. And some have consolidated ones, like the City of Toronto, or City of Vaughan, or City of Markham, or Town, sorry, Town of Markham.
So, since I moved this item on the agenda, I would, I agree that there needs to be further conversation and potentially a consideration of including election bylaws with regard to signs incorporated in the overall municipality's sign bylaws, if we choose to do so in the future. So, I will pass it back to you, Madam Chair.
So, I think at this point, it sounds like there's an appetite to defer, which would take priority over the resolution in front of us. So, I will take a motion to defer. Moved by Counselor Carruthers. Comments?
May I?
Yes, of course. No, just a moment, Counselor Leahy. Counselor Johns has not had an opportunity to speak. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I'm just looking for clarification. I understand you're, the motion to defer, is it a defer and then refer to staff with a list of deliverables that we're gonna? Thank you.
So, the motion to defer would first happen, and then we would take a motion to refer it back to staff with a request for a workshop and some further outreach with staff. Okay, go ahead, Counselor Leahy.
With regard to the motion to defer, to, we have left it open-ended. I would like to see this move forward because it's important in terms of communications in our municipality.
I just said that's what we were going to do.
Yes. And so, I would like clarification on the date, if there's going to be a workshop, the next opportunity for a workshop, I don't know if a topic has already been selected. I have been, we have been surveyed by our executive coordinator if there was a topic that we wanted in the next, the September workshop that's scheduled for the first week of September. So, in light of that, and the hopes of not delaying this any longer than it absolutely necessarily needs to be, would it be possible to determine a date of the deferral and the workshop so that we can have a time objective to work towards? Thank you.
Thank you. So, I, that point was already made by Counselor Crone, which was that time was of the essence, though while it was important to get it right. I see your hand went up. Mr. Valčić, would you care to comment on that from a staffing perspective?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to confer quickly with the clerk that the September workshop time slot, can you just confirm what date that was in the calendar and whether there was any topics already slated for that workshop?
Go ahead.
Through you, Madam Chair. For that particular date, which is Wednesday, September 3rd, there were no identified topics, unfortunately, and staff had intended to advise council on July 24th to cancel that placeholder, as there were no topics or available presenters. The next available opportunity would be October 15th. That is the currently scheduled workshop date.
So, Madam Chair, I would just want to get verification from staff, but if we were to, are we in a position that we could prepare material for the September, pardon me, 3rd? For the September 3rd time slot, would that give sufficient time for you to prepare some material and have the discussion on that date?
Absolutely.
So, Madam Chair, that would not push this too far into the future and would give you an opportunity to have discussions in early September, and then depending on how those goes, perhaps revisit this report and recommendations shortly thereafter.
So, we have a motion on the floor to defer the matter, and then I will, I think we'll vote on that, and then we will refer the matter to staff for a workshop in September or the third quarter, sorry, or the fourth quarter of 2025. So, if something goes sideways, and I don't know what the result of that polling was for the September 3rd, so we'll say possibly September 3rd or fourth quarter 2025, so that at least we've given it a timeframe. Counselor Carruthers and then Counselor Leahy.
Thank you. I didn't want to lost your comment about the ward meetings, having those in advance of the workshop, so we can understand what some of our questions and concerns are, and it allows us to dig in a little deeper. I think that would be very, very useful if we can plan that in advance. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy.
Thank you very much. I prefer specific dates being in the motion. I'm only in favor of a deferral if we indeed can guarantee that there will be a workshop on Wednesday, September 3rd, because I do not want to see unnecessary delays because of the impact that it takes on potentially communications in small businesses. And we are not a small town anymore. We are a growing and increasingly large town, and with that growth, we need to modernize and we need to do it in a timely and efficient way. So, we've received previously deputations on this, so unless the deferral has the specific dates in there and not just be left open, I am not in favor of deferring this.
Your point is made. Thank you. So, we have a motion on the table, on the floor, from Counselor Carruthers to defer this matter. All those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. I will now entertain a motion from the floor that we refer the matter back to staff for a workshop on September 3rd or fourth quarter of 2025, because I want to make sure that the work can be done properly. There were lots of questions, and only a few people, only a few of us were given that opportunity to ask. So, I mean, I have a motion.
No, through you, Madam Mayor. I have another question. Through you, Madam Mayor. It is my item on the table. I moved it.
So, that's, it's off the table now because the motion to defer has been carried. So, we're now trying to decide what we're doing with this matter, and I would like a motion to direct staff to prepare a workshop. So moved, Counselor Carruthers? Thank you.
May I comment before we vote?
Yes, you can.
Thank you very much.
Make a comment.
Yes, Mr. Singh has said that absolutely it is possible for him to prepare a workshop by Wednesday, September the 23rd.
Wednesday, September 23rd?
Yes. A workshop by Wednesday, September 23rd.
No, the 3rd. It was the 3rd of September.
That's what I said.
You said 23rd.
Oh, sorry, 3rd. Wednesday, September 3rd, that he said it was, that is the next available workshop, confirmed by our CAO, and our expert staff has said that absolutely they can be prepared by Wednesday, September the 3rd to present that workshop for council.
Yes. And that's what we're voting on. So, I've got a motion on the floor. Counselor Carruthers has moved it, that we direct staff to prepare a workshop for September 3rd or fourth quarter of 2025. And if you do not agree with that motion, Counselor Leahy, you are welcome to vote against it. The reality is that we are an organization that is made up of humans, and if we don't deliver a workshop on September 3rd, then that's a problem. So, I'm trying to create some flexibility in this process. The direction is the 3rd, but if it doesn't happen, it can still happen later on in the year, because time is of the essence, and council would like to move this forward. So, all those in favor? Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Singh, and I look forward to working with you, and I'm sure all of us are looking forward to working with you to get some more, some more work done on this. Thank you. Okay, so, next item on our agenda is a memorandum regarding recreational equipment on the town right-of-way. May I have a motion to receive, please? Moved by Counselor Crone. Mr. Krupnik, would you have anything further to add to this memorandum?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Nothing further to add, other than just to comment that, you know, staff are not of the opinion, or staff are of the opinion that the current bylaws provide them the necessary means to, necessary flexibility to adhere to the bylaw as it is, as it is intended to be adhered to. So, there's no intent to actively prohibit activities on our streets, just to keep staff and residents safe. Thank you.
Okay. Members of committee, any questions or comments? Counselor Johns.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I appreciate the report that staff have brought forward. I will say that I, my concern does lie within the arbitrary nature of which it's complaint-based. I do note that there are multiple locations within our ward specifically where residents actually even have basketball nets that are even affixed in place with concrete. And so, I feel that the nature of it being arbitrary, I don't agree with. I agree with the spirit, obviously, because in wanting to drive this forward and open up the opportunity for recreational opportunities close to home, and so, I appreciate the report. I will say that, again, just to reiterate, I'll be voting no based on the comments that I just made. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Okay. Anything further? Counselor Carruthers, go ahead.
Thank you. So, we're just voting to receive the report. So, I just want to clarify that voting no is you're not receiving the report, even though we have received the report. Can you just clarify that?
You would like me to clarify my position on my vote?
Yes. Because the, you talked about.
Yeah, I do not, if you're, sorry, through you, Madam Chair, to my council colleague, in, I have the ability to vote yes or no. I am going to be voting no. I understand to receive it. I don't agree that the municipality should be arbitrarily moving forward with complaints on specific residents because somebody picks up the phone and decides to file a complaint based on them. So, whether it is receiving and I'm saying no, or receiving and I'm saying yes, I'm saying no because the spirit, I'm, that's why I'm voting no.
Okay. Go ahead. The fact that our bylaws are complaint-based makes a lot of sense to me, because if no one has a problem with my basketball net where it is, then why should we send out a bylaw officer? Why should it be removed? Why should kids not be allowed to play? So, allowing basketball nets in places where no one seems to have a problem with it seems to me to be a pretty good compromise. And only cracking down on the bylaws when there is a concern by residents, when it's infringing on someone else's enjoyment of their property or their safety, or the ability for the town to get work done, that makes a lot of sense to me. And I do know that in this report, they lay out that there's an educational component first, that people aren't slapping fines just for the fun of it. It's about making sure that the nets are removed, and if they're not compliant, then it ramps up. So, to me, if there was a motion that we wanted to change how our bylaws are enforced, that would be a whole other discussion. But receiving this report, I, with thanks to staff who went to the trouble putting this all together, but what exactly our bylaws say, so it's very clear to residents, I appreciate that, and I will be voting in favor of receipt.
Thank you, Counselor. Anything further? We have a motion on the floor from Counselor Crone that we receive the memorandum. All those in favor? Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is item number three, and I believe, Mayor Haxson, you have declared an interest in this matter. I wasn't sure, because I wasn't sure if you had said L3, or, but we didn't have an L3, so it's an I3.
I3.
All right. Thank you. So, we have a motion here, which is a memorandum regarding Holland Park, also known as Holland Hope, the request for sanitary allocation. It's just a memorandum. May I have a motion to receive the memorandum? Moved by Counselor Foster. Thank you. Mr. Krupnik, do you have anything further to add to your memorandum?
Thank you. Through you, Counselor. Nothing to add at this time. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions? Counselor Leahy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Chair. I have two questions for our head of that department, Mr. Krupnik. How many sewage allocations does East Golem Berry currently have?
Through you, Madam Chair, and to the Counselor, Counselor Leahy. And I'm trying to, sorry, apologies, I might have to pull up the data from my previous report. My recollection, it's somewhere in the range of 229, if I'm recalling precisely. But, you know, I wouldn't say quote me on that, because I have to pull my previous report, and that, again, that is residential reserve allocation.
Thank you very much.
Just a second. I see that Mr. Valčić had his hand up as well.
Madam Chair, just for clarity, because the, I just want to be clear for the public record, the question was, how much allocation is available? There's actually, I think it's in the neighborhood of plus-minus 3,700 units of available sewage capacity, but in terms of what the town has in its discretion, in its sole discretion, that have not been allocated, that was the piece that Mr. Krupnik was responding to. So, just so there's no confusion.
So, for clarification, it is unallocated residential units in the town's reserve?
Yeah, and unassigned at this point.
Yes. Yeah, I said unallocated, but unassigned. Okay.
Thank you very much. And in your previous report that you referred to, you recommended, the staff recommended that we approve the request of the 90 sewage allocations for Holland Park. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, I believe the recommendation was for the approval of up to 90 securely attached equivalents for that project.
Thank you very much. And one last question.
I said it was two.
Well.
Go ahead.
With regard to the density that we have in our official plan, and regarding the density that's in the proposal of Holland Park, does the request exceed or come in under the parameters that have been set out by the town in the official plan regarding density?
Mr. Krupnik.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. If I understand the question correctly, the application has been approved by the Ontario Land Tribunal. The application as approved by the tribunal does exceed density permissions that are provided within our, either our zoning or our official plan.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification, Mr. Krupnik.
Anything further? Counselor Johns?
Yeah, thanks, Madam Chair. It's more of a comment. When I saw the agenda item come up and I noticed the report, and I went back and I looked at the previous meeting where we gave direction, it's actually very similar to what had occurred on this, on what we just did with the signed bylaw. The animated discussion that was occurring triggered the vote to happen, and then there was a second from Counselor Crone to be able to have the report sitting here before us. And I understand. us, and I, and I understand that the way that the vote fell and caused this staff recommendation to not come back in these six months, and I will say at the time, I was hoping that we would get further clarity on what Counselor Crone was asking for and not come forward in this format and see that recommendation. I will say that, again, the investments that are being made on the federal government, the York region government, our municipal level of government with the, with the York Reg, with the Young Street revitalization, the work that's going into, the work that's going into our parks and recreation and the capital projects in the area, I was just, I, I was a bit torn to see that being delayed and come forward in this report, and the fact is, is that I made the comment previously about the opportunity to be able to have roadworks or earthworks, or I'm not, I recognize, Mr. Molinari, that I'm not using the proper terms for that connection. I would just hate to see all of these investments made on the Young Street revitalization be made and then have to be torn up and done again in that specific area when this does come forward again if it is approved. And so, again, I was, I was torn to see that come forward in this way, because my understanding was it was going to be different, much like the signed bylaw was just addressed here with these, the two separate motions. That wasn't the case because of a one-word difference in the way that it was, the motion was called. And so here we are, and I just wanted to say that I do believe that, you know, live, work, play should also be live, work, play, stay, and I think that a younger generation has an opportunity for housing security, and I think that those that are looking to downsize in their senior years should be, have the opportunity to live, work, play, stay with East Golem Berry and not just the, the current folks that are living here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Leahy, go ahead.
Thank you very much. Through you, Madam Mayor. I support.
I'm just, Madam Chair.
Yeah, I support the understanding that I also had, was under the impression with regard to the request by the motion made in the last meeting by Counselor Crone that more information was going to be asked for, but I, I believe that as counselors, we have a, a priority, and we have been given the mandate by the province to build homes faster in order to meet the affordable housing crisis, and that our expert staff had recommended in the last meeting that we approve of not only all of the recommendations, but the 90 sewage allocations. So I would just like to say that it's disappointing to see that there are, further delays have been added to this item on our agendas, and so that there is this procedural necessity that we wait six months until we address this again. But I would like to ask our CAO if there is any other means in which to proceed to reconsider this item on our agenda.
Mr. Valčić, did you want to comment on a motion to reconsider?
Madam Chair, I'm gonna suggest that the clerk clarify what the council and committee procedure bylaw outlines, because in fact, it's, it's there to regulate how you proceed with carrying out the business of committee and council. So Madam Clerk, could you clarify how that request for reconsideration would work?
Sure, thank you. And through you, Madam Chair, just to clarify from a procedural standpoint, at the June 3rd Committee of the Whole Council meeting, the motion to refer the report back was made after the original recommendations were defeated by the committee. So the reporting back contained no active recommendation, and as committee had defeated the substance of the staff report. So the referral only sent the report back to staff for additional information, and hence why there is a memo on today's committee. As a result of that, Section 18 of your procedure bylaw will have to be enacted. There are two sections to the Section 18, and namely, after a matter has been decided by the members, that matter can be reconsidered during the term of council or committee within six months of the matter being decided, if it is decided by majority vote of members that the matter may be reconsidered. So if the intent is to present a motion to reconsider today, that can be done, so as long as you have majority vote to first pass the motion to reconsider, following suit, you would have to be able to bring the original motion that was defeated for consideration.
Okay, and what, how does that work with receiving this memorandum? Where would that fall into the procedure?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Having read the memo, at the beginning portion of the memo, there is a section dedicated to the reconsideration mechanism that's outlined, so it would be relevant to that. You may want to receive the memo and subsequently seek a motion for reconsideration first, following the receipt, and then following that, you will ask us to bring forward the defeated motion from the June 3rd for your consideration.
Got it. Thank you. Appreciate that. Counselor Crone, you had your hand up, and then I think at that point, I think we'll, we'll at least deal with the memorandum and take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I just wanted to follow up on a question that was asked by my colleague around density, and that Mr. Krupnik, I would just ask for a little more detail. You, you mentioned that, through you, Madam Chair, to Mr. Krupnik, you, you said that OLT gave greater density than what was allowed under our official plan and zoning. Could you, they've asked for 90. What, what was the density that our, our plans, our official plan and zoning would have actually permitted for this, this piece of property? You, you left us hanging there, you wanted to know more information.
Go ahead, Mr. Krupnik.
Through you, Madam Chair. You're testing my memory, which is not that fantastic. I'd have to come back to you, Counselor, and, with that number, but once again, to the, 90 was single detached equivalents. That, that was not the number of units, so the number of units was greater than the number of single detached equivalents being asked. But if you'd like, Counselor, I can circle back with you, can probably find that fairly quickly.
I would appreciate that, but won't, won't hold this to you, but could you ballpark it for us, just to give us a?
If I recall, and my memory sometimes fails me, but if I recall, it was a matter of a quadrupling. So it was four times the density that was allowed. You were thinking it's a third? So Counselor Foster thinks it's three times the density, and I'm thinking it's four times the density. It's, and, and I've got a, I've got an estimate of five times.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just would say, for the purposes of the fact that this is an actual, like, business within East Golem Berry that we should be.
Let's wait for the information.
Yes, and joking about it is probably not appropriate.
So while Mr. Krupnik is getting that information for us, can we deal with the resolution to be received? I've got it on the floor to be received by Counselor Foster. All those in favor? Opposed? That's carried. Thank you. So we have received the memorandum.
Madam Chair, just a kind of friendly suggestion, I'm wondering if you would take a five-minute break, let staff look for that information, and then we could continue. I'm just conscious that Mr. Krupnik's looking on the spot, and we want to make sure we get you the right information, and we're not hastily getting you something that we later clarify upon proper review of this important question that's been asked. So I, I just put it out there as a suggestion, otherwise.
Happy to move for a recess, Madam Chair.
The other challenge we have is that there's nothing else on the agenda. So this is our last item. Counselor Carruthers?
Thank you. I'm not sure that the, since we don't have a motion on the floor right now, I'm not sure that, that we need this. It can be sent to us in a memo. I think that, that's important, that we're, our discussions are based on, on a motion, and we've received it, so I think that we can move forward.
Okay, so we have received the memorandum, and that is the end of our prepared agenda. So I guess I would be turning the chair back to the mayor.
Get the mayor?
She's right here. So, Mr. Krupnik, I know you're, you're probably, we probably railroaded you into something else, but do you have anything further to add before I turn the chair back to the mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Nothing further to add to this memo presently.
Thank you. And then, members of committee, nothing else under Development Services, so I will turn the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Seeing no agenda items listed under J to P, council, are there any updates to share under these headings? I'm not seeing any, and with that, be it resolved that the meeting of the Committee of the Whole Council adjourn at 11:50 a.m. Thank you. All those in favor? That's carried. Thank you very much.